Meeting come to order, please. The first order business, public comment. I'll take public comment. Raise your hand if they identify. And you've got three minutes. And we're not going to have public comments with respect to item three, the Bedrock Garden zoning. So if you want to speak, this is your time to speak during this time. Sir.
Members of the board, my name's Bill Humm, 38 Birch Hill Road. I'm speaking as a resident, not as a member of the Conservation Commission. Before I retired eight years ago, I had spent 20 years as a mediator of land use and environmental disputes. From that perspective, I strongly believe that the dispute over the operation of Bedrock Gardens is very well suited to mediation. Let me be perfectly clear. I am not suggesting that I am a candidate. I am retired and very happy with that. And I might well not be regarded as impartial by parties to the dispute. Mediation, in my view, is an ideal process for the parties to use to resolve their conflicts. In mediation, no one can impose a decision on them, including the mediator. The mediator can help them explore possible solutions without risk. As a collaborative process, nothing is finally agreed to until everything is agreed to. Typically, no party gets everything that they want, but they get the most important things that they want. A possible source of information about professional mediators in the region would be Jim Varne at the University of New Hampshire, who's director of the program on consensus and negotiation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please.
Hi, good evening. My name's Laura Harts. I'm an attorney with ORN Reno, and I'm speaking on behalf of Bedrock Gardens. And I wanted to thank the select board for taking the time to consider this today. And I just wanted to clarify the decision that I believe is before the board. And that is whether or not to let this garden continue for the next three to six weeks while the appeal to the zoning board of adjustment continues. So this is a garden that has been a bedrock, cornerstone of the Lee community. And I believe we'll hear more about its great record here in the community. And I just wanted to highlight the importance of this decision in keeping essentially the business open for the next three to six weeks. So I'd also like to just reserve the opportunity to, if all right with the select board, to perhaps correct or clarify any questions that might be raised by additional public comment speakers.
I'll take it under consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else would like to speak?
Thank you. I'm Dean Rubine from High Road. Well, first, I live on High Road, Bedrock Gardens, and I love Bedrock Gardens. And I'm not sure what their violation is in that. As somebody who deals with the traffic, I don't mind it one bit. I'm here to talk about the incident with the ORYA. I'm not a public relations person. I'm a computer programmer. But if somebody in my organization made some sort of stupid joke, and it looked like they were not caring for children in their charge and discriminating against girls, you know, I would try as an organization to take a very strong stand against those things. I would be for child safety and for against gender discrimination. And if they don't do that, you know, the organizations that deal with them have to step up and say, "Well, that's our view." And you know, the town of Lee has a relationship with ORYA. And I hope, just like Durham has, they take a strong stand and make sure that this gets resolved to the point where we can trust our children with ORYA. I looked at the statement they sent. I don't think they're there yet. And I hope that town makes a strong statement. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Please.
Brian, Sisnares 200, Wadley Falls Road. In addition to what Dean said, I'm concerned about ORYA, not only because my son plays baseball. He also does football. Next year, he's looking to do basketball. But I think the situation here is just a systemic problem. And I think somehow we have to find a way to hold them accountable because they are getting taxpayer-funded. They are taxpayer-funded in a way. We are funding them with some of our taxpayer money. And I think it has to be dealt with because the issue really comes down to how are they going to solve the problems that they have? Just getting rid of one coach isn't necessarily solving the problem. I think it comes from the top. And I think some serious issues have to be made. I'd like to see some representation from the town on that board of your discretion. Because if it's not taken care of now, it's going to continue on. Because I can tell you about a few years ago, I actually witnessed an incident here on our town field where a kindergartner was accosted by an adult, verbally accosted by an adult, to the point where he didn't play sports for several years. And it was disturbing to see. And what was more disturbing was the way it was handled. And basically, it wasn't handled. It was handled to a certain extent, but then it was kind of brushed under the rug. And that's disturbing to me because I see it happening again, again, again. And this just pretty much solidifies that the problem is systemic. And if there's anything you as a board can do to help with that, I would greatly appreciate it because the safety of our children is paramount. As someone who's on the school board, that's one of our things we talk about. Safety of our children is paramount. And I think we need to do, if there's anything you can do to make that happen, it would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you very much. In the back. I'll get the next one.
My name's Rick Berry from Murray Road, Glenmore Village. And I want to touch upon what the last gentleman did say about ORYA. I don't have any kids right now in ORYA. But I've lived here for 19 years. And out of the 19 years, I ran, coached, coordinated the baseball program itself for 14 years. And I can tell you time and time again, it gets shuffled under the rug. They have a problem with taking responsibility for anything. You raise concerns, like these gentlemen talked about, and they talk to you like they care, but they just quietly go away. I've seen it time and time again. And that's why after all my years with baseball, I got sick and tired of beating my head against the wall and just finally hung my cleats up. It was easier to walk away than to continue arguing on the right way and wrong way doing things. Okay? Our tax money does go to them. And I think what upsets me the most is this is a nationwide story now. And their response raises more questions than it answers. And for them to say no child was in danger, anyone here that has kids, if you disagree with me, the comment had not been heard, a child was in danger, plain and simple. And for Pete Ventura, the coordinator, to have had that libbies in the first place was wrong. The first thing I did when I became president of the baseball board, which they dissolved when I left, was to stop the barroom settings for the meetings and have them here at this complex, or Durham's conference room. Pete likes to run a good old boy system. I have known Pete for many years, and it just simply is what it is. And there's no surprise with me that he lawyer'd up. But to recuse himself from a meeting that he himself was running, I don't understand how he can even think that he can recuse himself when he was in charge of the meeting. He held the gap, okay? My tax dollars, like everyone else, does go to this program. And I would ask this board to strongly consider following suit with Durham and suspend their funds right now and demand an actual what happened. Because when I went on their site and asked what happened, all of a sudden, all my questions disappeared, and I can't even post anything on their site anymore. They've silenced me. So I'll speak here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. It was way in the back, sir. You make your hand up first.
Sorry, just wanted to circle back to Bedrock Gardens. I got over pretty quick. I'm Dr. Andrew from Sheeney, Oregon. And I'm here on behalf of Gene Livermore, John Silva, and a few of the other butters of the property. And our position is essentially that this issue is already before the zoning board, and we think it's unnecessary for the planning board to be involved at this point. It's basically forum shopping. We think they didn't get the decision they wanted at the planning board and are unlikely to get the decision they want at the zoning board, and therefore are seeking to have you guys maybe get a better result. That's not the proper procedure. This is already in front of the town and in other forums, so it's certainly a waste of town resources to have this board potentially giving conflicting decisions that may be not consistent with what the planning board, the zoning board, how they interpret the town's board's central position. Thanks for your time. Thank you.
Chris Butt, 17 Riverside Farm Drive in Lee. And I came to the meeting to listen to the discussion for a different topic on your agenda, but then saw Bedrock Gardens as one of the agenda items. So I briefly looked into it, but I will fully admit to not knowing the full history of the disagreement between the butters and Bedrock Gardens, or what the exact violation is. But I also am an educator for Wildlife Encounters in Bayrington, New Hampshire. And Bedrock Gardens hires us every year to come in and bring our animals to provide an additional component to their events at the end of August. And I've also been to Bedrock Gardens with my children because they do a program with the Masway Elementary in which the kids can exhibit their art throughout Bedrock Gardens. I've been, I have a biology degree for my bachelor's degree and master's degree as well in science. And to not include horticulture as an agricultural use is alarming because just as it is agricultural purpose to grow crops, it's agricultural purpose to grow plants. And these plants are used for a variety of reasons, not only for sale and income, but also for other aspects. And I'm sure that Bedrock Gardens would be able to provide you a list of all of their plants and what they're used for, and how that provides horticultural experience. Also, they do have chickens at that property, and that is agricultural purpose. So I understand with the butters that it might be an issue. I don't live far from the farm. I can walk there from my house. But I think, as Dean mentioned earlier, it's really not that often. And if we can find a solution that works for both the butters and for Bedrock Gardens, I think it's the best idea for our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else would like to speak? Floor's open. I don't want to say any subject. Anybody else? Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to move on to the next item, which is the actual discussion about Bedrock Gardens' request to operate. I guess at this point here, Scott, you have all the material. Do you have an opinion at this time?
I would like us to let the process go forward. There's a form for this. It's in the planning board, which I've already been to, into the zoning board adjustment. And it's my understanding that they're still in that process, so I'd like to let that process go through. At that point, maybe we can reconsider, but at this point, I'd like to let it go through.
Of course, you know, I sit on the planning board as the put a selectman's representative. So I'm very much aware of, you know, the application that's been going on for some time. And I have the same feelings that you do at this time. I would like to see it just go through the due process as much as possible and see where it goes. Therefore, I guess at this time, I'm going to move to deny the request. You haven't read the discussion on the motion itself? All those in favor? All right, motion carries. So the request is denied at this time. Okay, next item of business, Toby Van Aken, transfer station manager.
Well, you probably might know at this time where the marketing itself is not looking too good. So also, our hauling fees are actually going up. So we've got to look at what we're dealing with with the hauling fees to get rid of the CND and the MSW, the trash. What I did was I established a baseline needed to start somewhere on the bulky fees, on the increases of those to help on the hauling fees. Or let me go through the hauling fees that we've got right now. We're at $210 with CND, and then we're up to $225. That could possibly end up being $275 after we have that meeting with Lamprey, find out what's going on. And actually, I just got the email that we're going to talk about that trucking group coming up May 3rd. So I don't have any concrete numbers on that at this time, but the hauling, what Shipyard's doing for us is keeping it at $225 at this point for CND to go to ERCO. And the MSW part of it is $235 in the past, last year. Now we're going up to $252 at this time. And Shipyard's hauling at that number at this time through Lamprey. So when Lamprey balances their numbers out, find out what's going on with the trucking group, and we're going to have that meeting. And then we'll find out what we're going to be going with. If we're going with Shipyard, if we go with Shipyard, it's going to go up to $275 to ERCO and to Turnkey, and $325 to Wakefield. And that's like two, every two and a half months, we have to go to Wakefield for glass. And we usually haul in a month. I give you an example. Last month was for the trash, for the tonnages, averaged to about $60, $6,500 just for the trash or stuff. But the hauling fees end up being up to close to $2,000 for that month. So the revenue we're coming in just for the bulky fees don't even cut that. Don't even come near that if we do the numbers of what we've been getting in coming in. Plus, this also ties into the marketing aspect of it. So I don't know if you have your sheets with you. We could go through that real quick, through the marketing aspect of it, to give you some idea, like mixed paper. That is actually coming out of our, we have to pay for that. Last month, or the month and a half before, we ended up paying about $35 minus $35. All these years, we've all been making money in this. All right, it's always been a revenue to cover the overhead of other things that we have to get out through the door. But now, the hauling costs are going up and the marketing's going down, so we've got to find somewhere we need to be at here. And that goes with mixed, also with glass, too. Well, if you go with, if you look, I called today on the NRA, on your marketing sheet, this is part of it, that on the failing part of it, of the mixed papers, going to be up to $50 a ton right now to get rid of. So we're slightly under what we have to pay to get rid of our trash. We're not too far away. And this is the beginning of something that if it turns, we could lose control a bit if we don't start looking at what we need to do here with numbers. So it's kind of a learning curve for us. We need to look at this a little harder. And what we've got to do to kind of work around it, I'm trying, what I'm doing are the budget things, movement things, to make sure we have something coming in versus us paying more out, want to be able to have the revenue up here still, up high versus it coming down, breaking even. We don't want that. But in time, we're actually, the plastics, doing okay. It went up a couple of cents. But then again, also, too, the metal, on a good term of it, we sold aluminum, even though it took us up to about 10 months to a year, I got them, it was actually $0.61 a ton, I got them up to $0.78 a ton. So you're looking around pretty close to $20,000 for one truckload. But you've got to look at it. That's revenue for us, but it took 10 to 12 months to get that. So if we could actually encourage and do more, better recycling on just, for example, on aluminum, if we do more aluminum in the town and keep it going that way instead of throwing it over in the trash, I think we could actually back up. Instead of doing like 10 to 12 months, we might be able to get eight months out of a pull truck. Because the way it's going right now, towards the end of the year, the metal's going to stay up there, okay, at this point. And that's only just aluminum. So now, the tin cans part of it, as you can see down here, I got a shipment ready to go out and be ready to go out another couple of months. But you look at the signs, you're talking, the money part of it, it's up to $115 plus. So at that time when it happens, the market of the metals, you're not going to see it dropping down, but you're not going to see like the papers. The papers is what we're going to have problems with. Because that's exactly what they told me today. We could actually try to mix the loads to offset our costs, to get rid of the paper. But the only time we can be able to do that, we have to look at the numbers of what is going to benefit us on the newspaper. The newspapers is slightly under $100 a ton, basically. And so when it drops down, in a couple of months, they're saying it's going to drop. They're looking at it right now. So this is a start of something we have to look at a little harder and come up with some, you know, good concrete figures. Something we can look into, like a contingency plan or something like that, we can move forward on this. Not just in my case, everybody else, us. And plus, encourage the residents even more. Show them where the money's at, where it's all going, where it's all coming from, and what we have to do in order to get this stuff out the door. Because I get it.
I've got a couple of questions for you. What's your guesstimate? I know you've only been a transfer station manager for some time. People less recycling going on?
I see it less because I see a lot of stuff going over the wall. And we've been catching things like electronics, and we see in, even though it's finger electronics, I got that price down. The NRA charges .44 cents a ton to pound, but I got it down to 33. So we're in that range, but they're going to go back up again. But anyways, there is a lot of plastics, a lot of aluminum, a lot of canned goods and stuff going over the wall that we see, we hear it, or it could be somewhere else, all of a sudden, we hear the trash. And the only way to figure that out and know how to do it, we've just got to look at it, maybe let the residents know, too, to help on trying to do the best they can, even though they're doing a great job at it. They're doing an excellent job, but I know we can do more. There's that window, we could do more. And these times, we could do more. We should.
Yeah, well, I was going to make the suggestion that we do it right up in Lisa's kneecry at this point about something. Basically, put in the, you know, in the cry exactly what you're talking about. The costs are going up, so we all have to pitch in. So that's one avenue to keep the citizenry alert of what's happening because of volatility in the market. So I also agree that maybe in the future budget, you might request a small contingency fee, knowing that some things go up and down, and that'll allow you to move things around and stay within a certain budget line. So I'm willing to have that as a consideration as well.
Yeah, since it's coming up here in a couple of months, it's going to, because I'm going to have to probably, the way it looks, I'm going to have to make some adjustments in the next budget.
I also realize that town of Lee is changing as well. We have more developments coming in. Maybe we're not the small village anymore, and people do move material.
And that same thought, that we also have a lot of fill, too. So if there's, I talked to Bill, and Bill Inspector, Inspector, we got with him, but it's just got to meet the criteria for DES. So as long as it's approved, it's an outside contractor, they can actually use it as a fill per their specs. But if it's in-house, if it's in the town of Lee, we could actually use it anywhere you want it to fill. And then as long as it's underneath a footing, then it's going to be a permanent structure.
We're talking glass.
Glass. That's what we're talking, is glass. And that, in the long run, that'll help us in paying that extra $30 a ton, that there is no market at this point. And I haven't seen any market since I've been doing it. And then the hauling costs are jacking right up there, so.
Scott?
The hauling fees you're quoting, Toby, are those ones you went to Shipyard directly?
The Shipyard directly, on the $275, ERCO, they gave me that if we go independent with them. Now, it depends on what we, what Lamprey negotiated with. So it all depends on if Lamprey still wants to do the surrounding towns again. That's the other thing. But if we do it independently, she told me this is what it would cost if we do whatever the hauling through Lamprey, if we do it ourselves. In the meantime, I'm getting three, two other numbers of hauling companies in the area that will do the hauling for us if we decide to have them do it, something else that's not Lamprey. But we have to wait until we go through and see where they're at May 3rd. Those are the questions.
Those are based on distance, I assume, right?
Based on distance, correct, yeah. I got a few of them down a little closer, so they might save a few cents, a few bucks. So that also helps, too. So in the meantime, in the next month or two, I'm doing some digging, because the numbers coming through, help balance this out with all of us in the town. So I understand clearly, I've got to pay the extra $10 to get rid of this. I know where that money's going. But some of the residents in town, I get questions all the time. Well, how come, where's this going? But I think we should put it out there a little more. Okay, this is where your $10 is going. It's going to put this over here to move this and get it out of here, because in one year, we have to get it out, just from there. This is a transportation, the hauling fee. It'd be good to break things down a little bit.
Transparency is always good. So I'll actually work with the town administrator, at least get something going through the cry, something so the public will understand where it's going. Now, getting back to these bulky fee increases, is this something that you're recommending?
Well, this is something where I try to get a baseline to start from. I know a few of them that I'm recommending, quite all of them, basically. But when in flight, we could actually, there's a bracket on the side that it's good to have your input on this. And a little bit of more research on it to narrow it down some. Maybe there's a couple items might be a little bit, but we're in between the towns around us. But I have to figure, they have to get down and figure individual shipping, like, for example, mattresses. On the average, there's tonnage for that. And that tonnage, when these cans start weighing, that's a lot of weight. If we have to start, if the tonnage, like, for example, I'm going to bring in mixed paper, and if that mixed paper starts hitting like $65 a ton, if you look at our contingency plan, if we plan on doing something like that, you might as well better off just throw it out. But not stop recycling, because this process could last six months.
Sure.
Well, then again, it might not last for that much. And then, actually, the market might shoe back up there. So it's still important to recycle everything we can, but hit the main points we need to be in order to get rid of this stuff and make the revenue coming in. Tires, I'm hearing about tires are going up, getting delivered, but the fees, at this time, they're included with the NRA. The NRA has pretty much got ties of all that. So I'm getting more and more insight from them. I'm calling up and trying to see if I get more insight on the marketing part of it to keep us posted, like every couple of weeks. But every time I talk to Marilyn, she's actually going to, when she hears about it, when they get review everything, she's going to let us know where everything's at at one shot. She's going to send me an email every couple of weeks. So it gives us what's going on at this point, so we can actually continue, you know, prepare ourselves for what's coming up. I don't know if you got the emails in the past. Maybe from Carrie, I got one from Carrie, that, you know, the way the recycling business is. You know, it's something that it's starting to hit. It's going to affect us. And it's just a beginning of things.
Yeah, just look at like a three-pointed target. See what Scott says. One, we try to get stuff in the choir to educate people as much as possible. Two, definitely consider increasing in the bulky rates.
Well, I think at one point, we had a solid waste committee, and they were very helpful. But we instituted them those particular fees so people wouldn't start dumping things all over the place. But you go back to, when the taxpayer pays their tax bill, they're expecting those particular services. One of them is getting rid of trash. So you have certain people in the community that have a point of view that, "I'm already paying to get rid of my trash. Now you're charging me extra for all these things." I think there seems to be a happy medium. Some of those fees are getting quite expensive.
Well, they are. They've got to look at, it's fluctuating up and down. We've got to find out how we're going to handle this. That's why I just, we needed a baseline to start from somewhere, so we could look at the whole picture. Is it worth it or not, or how are we going to handle this? Or which direction? Or we've got to come up with a system here.
Or we gotta come up with a system here?
Because. Even though those prices been here for about fifteen years.
Yeah.
But you gotta look at what we're dealing with, everything else in general, and what's not coming in, period. Now, if it doesn't come in, what are you gonna do after the fact? How are you gonna keep going?
But I think that's a larger discussion that we should have in terms of where, because as far as I remember, and I don't remember exactly, because I wasn't on the committee, but they started doing those kinds of things so that people wouldn't start dumping them and whatever.
Sure, the side of the road and so forth.
But, but I'm hearing you talk town Toby, that this is trying to offset other costs, and I don't think that's the point of those particular fees. So, I think.
There's more to it than that.
Yeah, I think the three of us need to have a conversation about where we're gonna go with this, because I think that's a conversation in and of itself. So I'm just concerned that some of those fees are getting extremely high, so.
I think definitely the conversation, but I think we definitely should put some of the equator, some people on the stage going for the recycling issue.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, at least we got, we know we got a baseline to start from, at least we could work with it, take off whatever x amount, but we have to narrow it down, that's the thing. I could give, I'm giving you numbers that, surrounding areas, but we, as a, a town, we need to look at the whole figures. I know there might be a couple that might be a little high, but maybe we could just take that off, or whatever. We need to figure that out, is it gonna be, where's that dollar sign gonna end up at? Depending on the balancing of the marketing versus what we're hauling.
Yeah, maybe what we should do at this point is have a work session put together.
Sure.
And we can invite the town administrator, maybe, you know, people who handle accounting and things, and have us a little bit as well.
Sure.
So we can make an informed decision.
So just so you know, if the board is going to entertain adopting new fees, that needs to be done at a public hearing.
Yeah, I think we're just gonna look at discussion at this point. But let's see if we can put together a work session, you know, with the water cycle man, transportation manager, you, and who do you think, Ben Jeans or?
No, I think we'll have to work with Joanne Clancy to put together historical numbers.
Okay, let's try to do something like that.
Yeah, on what we used to make from recycling, and we do not make that. We don't get the same revenue now as what we used to.
It's good to look at what we have inside the gate, everything. I got the list going already, it's starting, I have a, a chart for what we have, for C and D, and what's going on, what's coming in. Okay, I got that. I'm working on a chart for the plastics and how many months we make the, I'm trying to nail that stuff down, so when this does come about, at least I'll have some type of idea, and then we could prepare for the last x amount of years, or, or you just plan on moving forward and what we're, what is gonna take to continue on, so.
Thanks for bringing that part forward, and then Julia made contact, so we get time for the work session. Speak to me about the next item, which is the swamp dump.
Well, the good thing about it started today.
I got calls, I can email.
I know, it took a little bit, you know, keeping the operation going, but it started the day, we start everything, and most of the supplies are all there anyway, so.
Okay.
And I don't have a deadline to be complete, but it's moving forward, so.
By some.
There's one guy, is gonna dedicate himself to it, see where we're at by the end of the week, and figure them there. And I'm the other guy to do the sheen. But anyways, it's moving forward on that.
Thank you.
And you're gonna work on the fence too, right? At some point?
That, I actually am gonna have, I got a guy coming in Thursday for that, because that fence, a hundred and fifty feet of it, looks pretty raggy, and we can't, it's hard to, you know, you spend, every year we gotta try to straighten that thing out. And I think what we're gonna do is, I got the guy coming in, just a quarter's on, a hundred and fifty, two hundred feet of fencing, post, whatever it takes to repair that, and then also in between, and see what we can do, and give us the numbers on some swing gates in there. So winter sets in, and we don't have to end up trashing the fence every year, it's been like that since I worked with it. I mean, it's always, every year, it's always something going on.
It's when you dump the snow, right?
Exactly, or pushing the snow, it just pushes everything over, and so, trying right now, I got the guy coming in, actually, the company is one that put it out.
Okay.
So, and that's a start right there. If it's within the budget range and stuff, I'll go ahead and just get it done and be done with it.
I'm just concerned because we have that kinda cordoned off, so people don't go in, the fence is down.
Right. The other thing, I just gotta check, we might have to push a certain area to go out a little bit, but I'm not sure where the line factor is on that. I had to check with Karen to find out where we're staying on that, so. But it's in the works on that, so Thursday I have an answer on that, and next quarter I'll let you know what it is, or it's in there, you'll see it when you drive around.
Sounds like a plan.
Thanks Toby.
Thank you very much.
Next item, Chief Crownsman.
Evening. Evening. Let's start with just a little bit of history on the detail pay rate. When I took over a little over four years ago, one of the first things I did was look at our detail rate. That's how our officers generally make their extra money. And we were on the very low end of the scale as far as departments around us in Stratford County. So at that time, I decided to raise the detail rate to forty dollars an hour, which is what the officer gets, that's not the ancillary costs and the admin fees. But being mindful of the vendors that were gonna be impacted by this, racetrack specifically because it was right as the race season was starting, I lowered my detail rate down to the forty all, so everybody was forty alls across the board. What I'm looking to do now, and for the past four, little over four years, it's only affected me financially, the detail rate's only a dollar an hour more than what my normal rate is, and the detail rate is typically a little bit more than time and a half of the officer's overtime rate. So for the little over four years, it's only affected me, I haven't cared, I don't work a lot of details. Now I have a sergeant. So now I have a sergeant making what, not making what he should be making. So I felt it was time we just bring it back to the way it used to be. And actually, the chief's detail rate is actually still a little bit less than previous administration. You know, people look at these numbers, they say, oh my God, he makes eighty dollars an hour. No, it's not, it's the, all the ancillary, kind of the retirement and admin fees and everything.
And these are now kind of like what other departments charge around?
Yeah, still a little less, still a little. Except for Exeter.
Oh, you checked around?
Yeah, well, I found that out tonight, but I have checked with Durham and Stratford more, in line with Barrington and Durham and UNEH and.
Okay. And the, when our officers work for another town doing this, do they get our rate or their rate?
Our rate.
Okay, so they're, they're, what is it? They're, and gain access through us, not through them doing it on the side or anything like that?
Correct, well, we, we build the vendor direct.
Okay.
So if, if we go to Durham to work for Evisource, we build Evisource direct. Cinco de Mayo, Graduation, Cinco de Mayo will build Durham direct, Graduation will build, build UNEH direct.
So the vice versa, when somebody comes from.
Exactly.
Farmington, because we don't have anybody, that they, they.
Yeah, racetrack, any outside agency works the racetrack, they build a speedway directly. We straightened that out a number of years ago, because I was getting to be an issue with retirement.
And what's the admin fee? Remind me?
Twelve dollars and sixty-two cents.
Per hour.
Mm-hmm.
And then your retirement and everything, and then we still build the cruiser separately for ten dollars an hour.
Okay.
And it's, I mean, the, the increase is no, is no burden on taxpayers, it's the vendors that pay it.
Next, exactly. Now therefore I move to change the special duty pay rate for the police chief to fifty-nine dollars per hour, or for the sergeant to forty-five dollars per hour, to change the special detail rate for the police chief to eighty dollars per hour.
Can I affect it when?
Effective immediately.
Okay, second, would that change?
Would that change, thank you very much. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you. Hopefully nobody's out on the detail right now, because the rate just changed.
No, I'm gonna let the chief deal with the particular issue, if there are, is anybody out in detail that you know about?
Oh, there isn't.
Oh, there you go.
Okay, all set.
Uh, uh, uh. Oh geez. Randy Stevens.
Highway supervisor. Welcome. Good evening. Agent Ollie, off the bid for paving, we got seven companies that came back in, so it was a fairly attractive bid. Quite a spread this year, probably more of a spread than I've ever seen, there was twenty dollars a ton difference from high to low, and it kinda shows that, now it's actually more than that, maybe, well, depends on twenty or whatever. In phase one it was. We did, went out, two phases plus the transfer station is a separate, and the highway is separate, because there's a little more fuss work, and you wanna bring down the price per ton on the roads. So basically, phase one was the shim and that we do before July first, and phase two is the overlay we do after. And GMI came in the lowest, they were the lowest last year as well. So I think the price is, it's just about, I think it was sixty-two last year, so it's three dollars and fifty cents more. GMI's total for all of it, if we did, even the optional stuff was three hundred and forty thousand, if you looked at, if you had that other sheet I had, my estimate was three forty, if everything was included. It was pretty close. Like I said, obviously we don't have enough money to do it all, but I don't think we have to decide that tonight. We can move ahead with phase one, and I have a couple of concerns with the paving we had last year, and that's in serious, very good company to work with, but I like to do, we have a couple samples, we did one asphalt sample, had a test, and because of the expectancy, we only did one, but I think we saved the others, so I'd like to do at least another sample. It seemed like the asphalt content was a tad low, but it's, it's, it's a complicated formula, depends on how much spines are in the material and everything else, so it's, I'd just like to do one more, now I can question a little bit on, other than that, I don't have any problems with them. Like I said, they're excellent to work with.
Are these all separate, Randy? So in terms of phase one, two, transfer station, highway, pickup?
Those, those three are all in the main bid.
Okay.
And then the mixed pick up was a separate bid.
So if we wanted to, we could do Pike for the cheaper price for them, or not?
No, we have to do phase one, two, and the transfer station, we have to do all one company. But we could do, for the mixed pick up, we can do.
That's what I mean?
Yes.
So we could do the cheaper?
Right, because that's a separate.
That's where you go and get some to.
Pick up, right.
And I notice here on the possible recommendation is Brox is a backup vendor?
For the mixed pick up, yes.
I'm finding that.
All right, therefore I move to authorize the highway supervisor into, into agreement with GMI, paving with Continental Paving as a backup vendor to provide paving as bid for the 2018 summer paving plan. Also authorize the highway supervisor into an agreement with Pike Industries, hot mix picked up at the plant with Brox as a backup vendor.
Brox instead of Continental? Continental's cheaper on the mix than?
It's too far away.
Oh, it's too far away? Oh, so.
But our little trucks would be cold before we got here.
Even with the new one?
I knew there was a reason.
Even with the new one?
Oh, because even with the new one.
Zip, zip.
Okay, motions on the floor, any further discussion or motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
The next item I'd like to table it until the other selectmen is back from the strip to the.
First item to be discussed is the ongoing matter regarding ORYA, and specifically to discuss the resolution that the town of Durham Town Council adopted, and to talk about whether the least elect board wants to consider doing something similar, but at least to have a further discussion regarding it.
You write a little material, I guess, at this time?
Yeah, I'm, 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 I don't know how to say this, but I'm, I'm concerned, but I'd like to see if they could do a third party, somebody that's not related with the organization to come in and do an investigation. We're getting another correspondence from, a gentleman from Madbury, I don't remember his name, who wants to talk with us.
Oh, yeah, what was that, Julie, do you remember?
I don't remember his name.
Yeah, I think there are a couple of gentlemen, I think there's two coaches involved in the ORYA program that had reached out to Mr. Selig, Durham's town administrator, and suggested that they all meet and have some further discussion. And I don't know whether, and I think Madbury has indicated that they might be interested in sitting in on that discussion. I guess I might just caution the board that we not politicize it anymore than it is, so I don't know whether the board wants to send me or someone else if such a meeting's gonna happen, rather than have members of the select board go, just to hear what the parties have to say.
I don't have any issue with that.
I would like to hear it firsthand myself. I don't know if we can, just one of us go?
Maybe just one of us, or one of the other.
But I'd like to hear from the, from the youth association board in terms of the process they went through and what things they put in place.
I believe that, and Matt Glove, the ORYA director is here, I believe that ORYA is putting together, I guess we might call it a summary of the investigation, and I know that Durham is, because Durham's asked for that, so obviously we would get a copy of that as well.
But if you want to go, I have no issue with that.
Well, I don't know if their board is willing to meet with people from outside, I'm not sure.
Well, there's a, I mean, there's a lot of moving parts to this right now. There's a lot of moving parts to that right now. Right now, as I understand it, there are a couple of the coaches that want to meet with, I think, Mr. Selig and maybe representatives of the Durham Town Council and the select board, I'm not entirely certain what that's gonna look like. There's also the matter on the table as to whether the least elect board also wants to indicate to ORYA that until such time as we get more information back on the investigation, that we won't be sending our annual contribution, which I think we're not gonna be doing until July first anyway.
Yeah, I think we have some breathing time with that.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not trying to threaten them with withholding their money, I just would like some information and some answers. And it's very distressing when you hear that in the news about something that happened in your community like that. And until you get a good investigation, I'm not sure, but they did, because there was some mention about, they talked to somebody, and then somebody from law enforcement, I don't know what that is, but I'd like to know that, you know, it was done, and whoever was responsible, that something happened, it was dealt with. I'm just concerned, when you read that in the newspaper, especially with kids, you go, not my community, so, that's what I'm concerned about, so.
And I'm not, for my end, I'm not interested in withholding anything at this point.
I'm not either.
Till we have a little bit more discussion.
I'm not either.
All right, so we're in agreement at that point. So I guess it ends at this point if Mr. Bugby wants to be involved in.
Well, I don't wanna, I don't know what Mr. Brown's thoughts are either, since he's not here.
If it's something has to be done immediately, then you'll deal with it, and if not, we can wait till the next meeting, or the discussion.
Okay, so you're not interested at this time in withholding funds, or you're suggesting to ORYA that we're gonna withhold funds?
Not at this time.
And that, other than this other meeting, which may or may not take place, I think the end of April, we'll just wait for the report from ORYA before you consider any further action.
Correct.
Would the chair entertain the, give the option to Matt to come to the podium and speak to this, if he wishes to?
If he'd like to.
He doesn't have to.
Sure.
Well, in terms of this whole process, can you give us some more information? I don't know what you're able to give out and what you're not able to give out.
And I don't really know that either, but I will say that we have been requested by the town in Durham to create a quote-unquote executive summary of what we, what our process was in our inquiry, to the allegations made, and we're in the process of doing that right, right now. And as soon as we finalize that, it will be shared with everybody that, that needs that. Our first priority was to ensure that we met with the family who requested those allegations once we concluded our inquiry into the allegations made. We have done that. And I believe that that party is one of the ones that is requesting additional meetings. So we would be happy to continue doing those and be able to outline exactly what we did to question everybody that was involved and to come to conclusions that we did.
Can you give us an idea in terms of that executive summary is going to be available?
I believe the town Durham requested that by the second, but it will be done prior to that, I assume, to be able to get to them.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. What else do you have, Julie?
Just my July vacation request. I just wanted to submit that currently this year because it's going to include a date that includes a select board meeting. This is something that my extended family is involved with, so I can't manipulate the dates. So I'm just asking that I can't excuse from the select board meeting that's the week of.
Do you have a viable backup?
I do. My back, my, my backup in training, who had to handle some issues on Friday.
Oh, yes, yes.
Because I was in.
Yeah. That's true. She'll do fine.
But I mean, obviously I'll just be with before that meeting.
Thank you.
I'm fine with that.
Thank you.
Okay, I move to accept the consent agenda is presented. Further discussion on the consent agenda? During now, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, I guess I will say, well, for signing documents, although I don't know if Mr. Bubey was going to comment on the latest meetings of the TCVC, but I did, I did do a draft of an RFP and forwarded that to the TCVC and I believe that they discussed it at the next meeting.
Have you discussed the original one, but not the revised one?
Where's the little stickies?
I apparently.
Red dish. Little stickies.
Although on one of the items in the consent agenda, did the board want us to put together either a letter, a commendation, or a certificate or something for the Eagle Scout?
Yes, please. Is this, are these the exceptions for the church and the daycare?
Yes.
I think you already signed.
Oh, ours?
Maybe way down here.
They got way legs on them. Oh, okay. Next item, I move into non-public session, Mahanja Horace City 91-8 colon 3 to A, C, D, and I. Do I second?
An I or an L?
Is that I or L?
I think it's an L.
That's an L? Okay. Mr. Bubey?
Yes.
Mr. LeCours? Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Town administrator, please join us. I move to seal item C.
Second?
Local vote. Yes, Bubey?
Yes.
Mr. LeCours? Yes, motion carries. Okay. Miscellaneous, anything happen?
I attended the last session for the Legislative Policy Committee that I'm on, September 14th at 9:00 AM is when they're going to have a meeting. We will get some time in the summer list, so at some point we can go through the list and determine what we want to have whoever goes to vote, or vote on most particular things. But most likely July, first part of August, that's what I'm going to, so just to find it out. And then TCVC, we've got the original one that you invented and we got the revised one this today, so we'll talk about that at our next meeting, so we can move that forward. So, and the whole thing with Toby, in terms of the truck, we meet on the 3rd.
Okay.
To sell it. Last time I heard, we got a bid of $40,000. So I'm not sure if there's any other bids that came in, but the idea is to sell the truck and then we'll figure out how much the town owes. We're not going to owe very much. If we sell it for $40,000 and most likely they're not going to charge us any interest for the period that we have to loan, so we're going to pay the next debt up and go, so to pay that off. But hopefully during the meeting, we can have a conversation about doing a contract with Shipyard that's cheaper than the rates that he's quoting. So we'll see. Also, he passed on, the gentleman who used to be our driver passed away, so he had open heart surgery two months ago and he's unconscious, so unfortunate. I don't have any big notes.
Yeah, that's sad though, what he passed on. What do you guys have? Denise? In training? The decent training, you know, that's a new word.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Oh, the next time I'll have information about the next train.
The next train.
Yeah, so we can figure out what that is. We also have on the next agenda, can we talk about Randy's replacement?
Yes.
Yes.
He and I sat down and we had gone back and forth via email with the job description and then he and I sat down and so I still have some tightening up to do because it's running late. So we'll have something by the next meeting.
Fair enough.
Sounds like a plan and we're going to keep the meeting still at 6:30 because I've been re-voted, Senator, again, for about two years, so. That's the way it is.
How come we didn't have a vote?
Yeah, we didn't get to say it.
You know, you become a senior mayor of the department, think you know something, a little white hair, you're involved a little bit, you stick in these committees.
Pine needles off the whole bushet?
Yes. Yes!
Is that your thrill?
Yes, I get small thrills out of maintenance requests.
Well, it makes you crazy.
Well, I mean, as of the day after you made the request, I don't know whether any have fallen since then, but.
No, the big.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. If anything, it's a fire hazard.
It'd be a shame if that building caught.
Oh.
That's not very nice. That's on the state historic register.
It's a shame if that building caught on fire!
Well, that's the other thing, the freight depot is supposed to be, we're trying to find out if it was actually put on the historic register in the meeting, a meeting. It was supposed to be, but we keep checking and they don't get back to us, so I'm not sure if it's on or not, but supposedly it's just one of those formalities, so we'll have three buildings on. The other thing, just to let you know, the historical, the Heritage Commission is looking at developing plaques to put on those three buildings, but also offering it to the other, I think it's nine properties in the town that are on the historical register. So working up a design and then working with the homeowners, if they want to, they'll have to, having this particular sign on there, so they know which properties they are, so. But definitely the three that we have on, or will be having three on, so that would be nice, so.
Very boozy.
Oh, well, so to let you know. Well, you see it, so it's like, I hate for things to happen and somebody speaks to you and you say, what the hell is that? I have no idea. So strike the hell out of that. We're working a design with Amy Daskill to create some replacement banners for the poles.
Yes.
The first one that you're going to see is for the farmer's market. That should be out probably end of May when they, when they start that process. There's going to be one about welcome to Lee, there's going to be one with honoring veterans, I'm not sure exactly what that is yet, and the fourth one, I can't remember what the fourth one is. But there's going to be four different designs, so there's a total of 12, so that will be exciting. So the farmer's market people are totally jazzed that they're going to have.
Totally jazzed, totally.
That's it.
To go on the top.
You sure don't.
Top pole, yeah.
Top pole?
Or power poles or telepoles, there's a combination.
Utility poles?
Yes.
To replace the ones.
Well, the brackets are still there.
There.
Took down the banners, but we're going to have new banners to put up. So we're going to have a problem too, because I've spoken to the gentleman who helped me the last time putting them up, and he says, this is the last time I'm doing it, and he says, well, somebody else in the department can help me next time, and he says, nope, they have, have nothing to do with it, so. Hopefully when we find his replacement, that will be part of the job description to.
And someone is contacting the utility companies to get the permission?
Yeah. One, co-op, we don't need it, because they don't care.
They don't care.
Public service, Evisores, there's a form we need to fill out. So as we get closer to it, we'll fill out that pretty good form. They didn't seem to have any problem with it, they just wanted a normal form. And the idea is to put these particular banners up, in the spring, they take them down in the fall, so they're not going to be up all winter. So we're probably leaving the brackets, but we'll take down the banners, because that is very damaging to the banners, because they become a sale.
Yeah.
That's enough.
Good, Mr. Bubey?
That's enough.
Denise? Julie? Move to adjourn.
Got to use the gavel.
Move to adjourn.